The following program is sponsored by John Chatches Insurance. Your local farmer's insurance agent located at 800 Avenue G in Ely. And brought to you as a public service by KGTV, Channel 10 in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Planning Commission Meeting, November 21st, 2019.
And all rise from the place of residence. We'll let Jim all the way through, please. We'll let him. Go ahead.
Please follow me and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the Constitution of the United States, with the highest and most important purpose, that we are one nation, united in the life of this world, with the best of our interests for all.
Thank you, Jim. All right. Paul Call.
Chairman Hewitt.
Here.
Ember Fattalas.
Here.
Ember Brown.
Here.
Ember Alstover.
Here.
City Building Inspector for each citizen.
Here.
City Clerk Lee.
Here.
Councilor Aller.
Here.
Okay, well, we'll move on to, uh, public comments. Comments made through the previous events will be separated from the general public in attendance. All right, George, do you have anything to say?
I do.
All right.
And, Mr. Chairman, the city is running an illegal advertising newspaper regarding vehicles that the city has taken from private individuals. Those vehicles need to be returned to the owners. Those vehicles were removed under color of law, improperly and illegally. Two vehicles were moved from my property at 490 High Street. They were older vehicles, considered antiques, valued at several thousand dollars. Restored even more. Mr. Ron Arnoldson is also a victim of selective enforcement in that the city went onto his property and moved an older vehicle, possibly worth thousands restored. He couldn't make it today, but he's asked the status of that, and he's yet to receive an answer, the same as myself. On numerification, the city council meetings, I have requested a complete list of all vehicles that were taken from private property. I want to know who authorized that. When did they go on agenda? And when did the city council approve that action? Who removed the vehicles and at which location are they located at now? Hopefully, the city didn't sell them. Would consider that grant theft auto. I also want to remind you that the city has done nothing to bring Councilman Plannus into compliance. His vehicles are on city right-of-way, not on private property. They don't appear to be licensed or insured as required by others. Why the discrimination? Councilman Plannus also sat on the planning commission, as you may recall. He needs to comply or resign. He can't have a voluntary. Why is the city clerk, Jennifer Lee, as well as others before, enforcing the law selectively? Either we have laws and regulations or we don't. Those that can't do their job, they're back to go. Mr. Chairman, I want to remind you that the city, the building inspectors, you have to issue a permit that I applied for to remove my house at 490 High Street, which is going to destroy my property. I'm not going to sit by and watch it go downhill. I want that permit. There's no reason why I can't have it. Is your building inspector still going to Eureka? Does the city under contract provide inspections for Eureka City and County? If so, what do they pay for the services rendered? On September 13th, 2019, your building inspector was seen in Eureka in a city-county vehicle with his wife. Does the city ensure non-employees, employee spouses, or the public in general can be able to ride and use city-county vehicles? Your building inspector selectively enforcing the law, under color of law. He is the single largest deterrent to the city-county growth, and you need to put a stop to that. Rules and regulations for everybody, not just for some. Mr. Chairman, the concrete triangle that was put at the ingress, ingress of Avenue D or the Holiday Inn is a traffic hazard. I don't know if you've been out there. The lanes are too narrow. Do not meet minimum city code. I'll finish up again.
Thank you, Jim.
That has yet to be addressed, and it's only getting worse.
All right. Okay, move on to number three. Comments for discussion, possible action on the planning commission. Councilman Aller, discussion for possible action, recommend approval of Resolution 2019-19, imposing a moratorium on enforcement of certain provisions of the Ely City Code pertaining recreational vehicles within certain areas of the city, imposing certain restrictions on use of these recreational vehicles during the moratorium period.
Say something.
Yes.
The dates on there don't match. It says 2019 slash 19. That's the name of the resolution.
Oh, okay. I thought it was the date. I'm sorry. Sorry.
I'm sorry, Jim.
Well, me either.
No, after all the rough treatment, I saw you get that one date. I think that's going to hurt you.
Okay. Thanks for letting me address the board here. Basically, we've been working on this with the committee, the attorney, and Brad and myself. As the resolution states, we're currently going to be experiencing a shortage of suitable housing, and expect to need for housing to come greater or more work to come to the area perform work on. These upcoming temporary projects, and the goal is, for example, the Endot project coming right now, the sheriff's office and the building there, out of the Camp Farm, the whatever other construction job moment, seasonal type thing. For example, when the TIC industrial company came in, they built a mill, there was a shortage of housing then. They went out to KOA, we talked this over with the owners of KOA, and they're trying to expand their business also. So we have several mobile home parks in our area that we would allow them, like we said in this resolution, to take in RVs, motorhomes, like housing. And it's just a temporary thing, you know, and like in the last page you said, it would end in one year after moving the place. And the people would have, our vision is, they would come forth and, for example, if I was an employee of Q and D, who's been the main contractor on the highway project, I have to be employed by them and come to the forum, you know, the construction manager said he's employed, I can go rent a space. And this is only for those workers. Temporary, we're having a shortage, and hopefully we can, we'd rather have, you know, my close minds are seventy miles away, some people may be willing to drive all the way to Eureka to get housing, try to tap the stones right here in the local area. And doing that, you know, you're going to shop locally, get convenience stores and so forth. So that's the whole question. Any other questions?
Oh, that makes sense. Now, this resolution is just going to also include the B and B types of businesses here?
No, no, that's another, that's another issue.
I was thinking, I just didn't want to see combined.
No, no, strictly mobile homes, for use in mobile home parks.
And sure, yours is going to be enough? Or should you just make that a plus today?
Yeah, there's a way to do that. That's an action of the council. This resolution shall expire, expire three hundred and fifty-four days after the enactment. But again, depends if the construction goes on, and we see it working, then we can all come back and extend it.
Okay, that makes sense. All right. Any other questions?
That makes sense to me.
Everything in there made sense to me. Well, I think we can take action on this today. I think it's pretty simple. George?
And, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I really don't have a problem with this, but you're not also including private individuals that come in here to work or to live. Why are you restricting only the workers? That's elective. You can't do that. It needs to be allowed for everyone. You're going to do it for a period of time. It's got to be open for everybody. You're not allowing individual lots. I've got lots that I can't use. I can't put a motorhome on there, I can't put a RV vehicle on there, yet it was done so in the past. Keith Carson has put a modular home in a trailer park. Can't do that. I couldn't do it on my lot, which is considerably bigger. Your building inspector is selectively enforcing the law, and that needs to stop. If you're not allowing allowances, you allow it for everyone. The reason some of those lots are undeveloped is because they can't get enough revenue in to do anything with it. And now we're going to selectively open up for a class that's coming in there temporarily? No. You need to be fair to everybody, not just for the trailer parks. You've got individuals that are violating the law right now, and you're not doing anything about that. You want to get consideration? That's fine, I can support that, but not selectively. There are plenty of empty lots in this community that could be used, were used, until your building inspector started selectively enforcing the law. When he does it, that implies that you're doing it. And you need to stop that. You've got to be open to everybody. And you can't just limit it only to trailer parks and everybody. Thank you. Jim, do you have an answer to that?
This time we went this way because I was immediately seeing this time. I'm not, I can't say yes or no, but I, George, you got an idea, you just need to get over the councilman and talk, put some heads together.
I think it's actually a good idea.
There are a lot of empty lots.
Because with all the people coming into town, you need every empty lot they've got.
Yeah, you know, we chose this right here because most of the construction workers are bringing trailers and so forth, so sure, it could be looked at.
I would suggest to the city council that they look about that. You know, I would think that we should approve this, but we should also put a, um, addendum to it. Thank you. Brain freeze, you know. So to take a look at George's idea of allowing smaller lots, because there's a lot of them around town that can be used. Including George's lot there, I've seen it. It's big enough.
It was consideration, but we would have to, we have not addressed that part.
Right, but I would suggest that since this is an pressing issue, that the city council look at this as soon as possible. Not this afternoon, maybe, but next week. I mean, the next time that they meet, let's put it that way. And...
Is she going to be included with this, Mr. Chairman?
Well, we are. We're going to actually, as the chairman's agenda. And we're going to add on to this, and actually have them look at your idea. I think that's a great idea.
Well, I think, Jim, sorry if I may interrupt, I think you said it perfectly. If someone has an idea, they present it to the, you know...
Oh, you present it to us as well.
Do we have a timeline on that? I mean, we don't know how long those construction people will be...
We understand a one-year timeline of right now with possible renewing. We can renew the resolution at that point, so...
I would personally suggest, go with this one with the mobile home parks, stand alone, and then start working on another one.
Right, but I was suggesting since...
This has been in process for over two months, and I'm expecting to start working on...
Oh, I agree.
You know, again, this was, there's a lot of work put into this, about, you know, all your hookups and so forth, got to be in place, sewer lines, got to make sure the property is owned, the people who own the property are interested in doing this. Some people got vacant lots, but won't do nothing with them because of whatever reason. But it's consideration, once again, I think Mr. Chatches should come forth with his idea to get over the council.
See what kind of adjustments has to be made in order for him to join the, you know, the crowd.
There's a, I think there's a little difference if you have empty lots in a residential house area, and all of a sudden, there's going to be a mobile home there. Irritate somebody or...
Well, we've got that already. I might mine our place one, basically. And, uh, this is pretty, and we've got, his property, for example, is right near Carson's property, which is, he's got a few empty spaces there, and I don't see that with...
I was grandfathered in, I was renting to both, and so were the ones prior. Grandfathered in, biggest problem is right there next to you, building inspector.
But the thing is, George, you've got to be amenable, otherwise, nobody will listen to you. You've got to, you've got to present...
I've been coming before you guys for the last six, seven years. You better check the record.
Mr. Chairman, all due respect.
I know, I know. All right, we'll move on. All right, having heard all of the different ideas here and so forth, I would like to ask for a motion to accept this resolution, and to also suggest that they look into George's idea of using other lots around town that would be acceptable to the city's citizens. Anybody else have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second? We need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we, having heard a motion and a second, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then here usually, we...
Aye.
Okay, it's your names.
So, there's quite an aye over.
Right, it's your names. Okay, we'll move on. We're going to catch up on our minutes here. Members, discussion for possible action, approval of minutes made 23rd, 2019. Thanks, Jim.
You bet.
Anybody else anything to add to these things? I think we're pretty straightforward.
Yeah, we're pretty, generally, as always.
Now, you know, Carly did all this.
Yeah, okay.
Wow, you've got great understanding.
My golly.
No kidding.
Fantastic.
I couldn't say anything wrong.
Yeah, I didn't say anything.
Okay. Everybody else get a chance to read it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, having, everybody having read these and finding no fault with any of the provisions, I'll call for a motion to approve the May 23rd, City Planning Commission regular meeting minutes.
I think a motion approved, making current 2019 minutes.
Okay, we need a second. Okay, Leah says...
Could you do another one? Sorry, I know it's not supposed to...
Sorry. Okay, having heard a motion and a second, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye, approving these minutes.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's your names. Okay, yes. Now, we'll move on to the next minutes. Members, discussion for possible action, approval of minutes due 27, 2019. Okay.
I can't see, no, I was on the phone.
No, you're here, you're on.
I was on the telephone, yeah, for June 27th. You called... I was...
See, I was wondering where you were on the phone. Yeah, that was the next one. Okay, I should go through these a couple of times. All right. Same procedure, uh, well, we just need a motion and a second.
A motion to approve the, I'm sorry, June 27th, 2019...
You guys do a second?
I'll second.
All right, having heard a motion and a second, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor approving the Ely City Planning Commission regular meeting minutes for June 27, 2019. Say aye.
Aye.
Again, it's your names. All right, we'll move on to the next one. Members, discussion for possible action, approval of minutes, July 25, 2019. Give me a moment. Then I have to make sure that everybody's read these and understood the problem. Okay. I'll call for a motion and a second. All right, Marie has made the motion. A second?
A second, Dan.
Leah has made a second. All right, having heard a motion and a second, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, it's your names. And finally, the last one. Members, discussion for possible action, approval of minutes, August 22, 2019.
They're all there, so short.
Yeah, it was a very short meeting. Again, I'll call for the motion and a second.
I vote to approve the minutes of August 22, 2019, of the City Planning Commission.
A second, Dan.
Okay, having heard a motion and a second, I'll call for the approval of the City Planning Commission regular meeting minutes of August 22, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's your names. Okay, we'll move on. Okay. Let's see, we have one here for September 26th, but I don't remember getting that. Did you get that?
No.
No, that was that.
Okay, all right, okay. I didn't think I got those, but they never know.
But the next one's...
Okay, I think we catch up.
We'll get caught up.
Yes.
All right. Reports, members, we'll start.
Yeah, I want to say something. Cal Ranch, you know, they just put a propane tank out there, but that corner is getting so messy. You know, they have all that stuff out there. It's getting dangerous, that corner. Now, I was reading the minutes that he was going to make more parking and everything, and it seems like it's shrinking. Yeah, and that tank, to me, is a fire hazard. Somebody hits that tank, that whole block's going to make the whole town...
Doesn't he have, just, barriers around it?
I don't know, I haven't seen it.
They do.
Yeah, I thought so.
Where's your permit?
I don't know, but...
Well, you better find it.
I was told they had a permit to put the propane tank in, I don't know.
Prove it.
I'm just really concerned that that place is getting really messed up there.
I think, I've been there, but it's many times, there's so much stuff up there.
I know, it's getting worse, they keep on adding...
Are we partially responsible for that?
I know, well, we should have proved that, you know, Wade Robinson wanted those lots and...
It's a marketing tactic. Cal Ranch is known for putting stuff out in their parking lot.
Yeah, that's...
You need to speak up, ma'am, I can't hear you.
I said, it's, it's a marketing tactic. Cal Ranch is known for putting stuff out in their parking lot. How would I just do that?
But it's, it's a hazard there. I mean, it's, I don't know, he promised more parking and everything, they didn't put no fucking ridiculous on there.
I had made room for some trailers over there.
Is it?
So, and they brought in all those pellets.
They're not the only ones on propane, and loves probably sells propane too, which is safer out there than down in, you know, that corner. That's my report. What can I say?
Okay. All right, Leah?
I have nothing to add to this.
Nothing here, Jim?
No, nothing to hear either. The only thing I have is some personal stuff that's where, some of these people around town are basically robbing houses out here. There's a lot more robberies than burglaries.
Speaking of the mic, I can't hear you, please.
Yeah, it's a little far away there. Uh, yes, uh, there's been a lot, I've noticed there's been an uptick in burglaries and robberies in town. So it's, it's something the planning commission doesn't usually handle, so I just was not going to say anything, but I guess the police are...
David Gibson's got the sculpture?
Sculpture? No.
Of the deer thing, yeah, some girl.
Oh, really? I don't think this should be punished appropriately. But all this, also this graffiti thing is going to get out of hand if you don't put a kibosh on it. They're going to be doing a lot of urals too.
You need to talk to the sheriff, you're paying half a million dollars for police protection.
Well, we need to have stricter sentencing when we catch these people, is what I'm saying. But how do you convince people that it's a big problem? They think it's nothing until it happens to them. So anyway, that's, that's all I have to say. All right, Councilman Plannus isn't here. City Clerk?
The paper has a classified ad in it today for RPC vacancies. That will be advertised for a few weeks. The mayor and the city council will appoint regional planning commission members from the city, who have about three seats, on December 19th. So, if you're interested, there's no matter on the 10th, by December 12th.
Oh, okay. Well, I've been doing this for 20 years, maybe a couple more years, it'll be okay. So anyway, uh, yes, now we have the city building official, Mr. Christian Seaman?
Nothing bad.
Okay. All right, I thought maybe we have something to add about the empty lot situation.
I'll wait till it's brought up.
All right. Okay, and then, lastly, we have further comments. George? Thanks for your previous comments. Pardon me? I said, thank you for your previous comments. Thank you for allowing that.
Mr. Chairman, I want to remind you that RVs, mobile homes are in violation right now. Within one or two blocks of my property, there's blatant violations, been going on for years, yet I'm the only one that had to move my tenants. I've lost thousands of dollars, and I'm not going to sit by an electric building inspector or anybody else continue to selectively enforce the law. You need to correct that now. If you're not going to allow me to use mine, either enforce the law or get rid of it. You haven't done that. Other than that, you owe me money for the losses I've incurred. You're selectively enforcing the law, so is your city clerk, and that needs to stop. Also, when did you pick up the September 26th minutes? You didn't approve those today, did you?
No, we didn't.
Okay, thank you.
And I may give a short reply, and let's not...
She's too...
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I report to you about Avenue D near the Holiday Inn. The lanes are too narrow to not meet minimum city code. Vehicles are jumping the curb now. The curb that was installed along Van Camp's property should be back, should have been back five feet from the property line, not 11. You narrowed that street for no reason at all. Someone narrowed the street that could have and should have been wider. That city, the city needs to go after that individual for errors and emissions and correctly try to, you're going to have a wreck there. With the amount of snow that comes in, you're going to cover that triangle, someone's going to come in there and completely knock out the front end. You have to have accountability. You're paying for professional services and you're not getting it. Mr. Chairman, I want to remind you that Sam Hanson has yet to put in the curb a better than the home we sold. Fence heights and the son's property located on Norman have yet to be addressed. Mr. Chairman, Tony Fleese has yet to comply with fence heights. I want to know, who does he think he is? Former councilman? Violating the law? Again, you have rules and regulations? You sent my family notices of no fences above four feet, and yet you're looking selectively the other way with others? Come into compliance, they're putting you on the spot because that's your responsibility. Mr. Chairman, Keith Carson is putting larger homes in the trailer park. Where's your building inspector? I couldn't put a larger home on my, one of my lots, which are considerably wider than the trailer spot there. Why the discrimination? You guys giving me kickback by chance, building inspector? I'm serious, you're going to laugh. I can't wreck my property, and yet you're looking the other way with this other. I also want to remind you that Keith Carson is putting horses on his property, which is within the city limits. You have ordinances, you've got to comply with them.
I'd like to make one reply here. Basically, we're trying to be as fair with you as anybody else, George.
No, it's not happening.
I mean, we brought up that section...
Mr. Chairman, his public comment is done.
Oh, okay, that's right. Now, I, just let me say this, we've been trying to be as fair as possible to you. You need to be more positive when you speak to people.
I'm positive.
So that you get your, so that you get your way. You look at what's going on, Mr. Chairman. You're selectively enforcing the law.
Just a reminder, December's planning commission meeting will be December 19th.
Right. Now, Brad, do you have any replies you'd like to make?
With regard to, yeah, there's a lot of like replies, he's talking about, I think he's talking about Carson's mobile home park. He's not doing anything that's illegal, those are all mobile homes.
No, they're not.
They're not, they're not.
They're mobile homes. I think I'm in a better position to, to tell you what they are, okay? Those have been signed off through the statement about it. Also, Mr. Carson's property, where he has horses, even though it's within the city limits, it's the zone that it takes out. I don't know whether it's in the city limits or not.
Check them out, I did.
So people need to take and look at some of this stuff before they start making accusations toward people.
This should be probably around the 40th... That should be probably around 43, right? Something like that.
There's several different zones. I think his is an O5, I'm not sure. But, um, also, the RVs that are located down there in that area, like in 2015, when we passed, when we moved everything out of the RVs, moved them out. We look back and if they could prove they've been there, I don't remember what the specific date was, but if they could prove they had been there before that date, they were exempt. Okay? That's how we came up with those. That's why there's, there's some that were down there, factors one, I don't recall the street, it's a white fifth-wheel trailer. He lives in Las Vegas, he comes up here for the summer. He filed for a special condition release.
I remember that one. I even remember this.
So we, we followed the law. Some people don't choose to think that they don't follow the laws, that we're signaling that out, but it's, if they're, if they look at it, it's, we're keeping them from making money and benefiting them, and that's kind of what we're doing.
And trust me, there's no bribes here. I mean, we actually.
No, and I think, just another thing, if we could take, and when you're doing your public comment, is stick to what it says in the public commentary right here. Impeachment or irrational, amount of personal attacks, interfering with rights and slanders of other people. We have a person in here that gets up in front of this, this podium, here and other places, and you need to hold that person to a strict standard, because he's right here in.
I understand.
We have a, we have a section on the city code that says.
But that's so ridiculous, I thought I'd slide, let it go. You know, and just address it a little bit clearer. Because I mean, there's a lot of people in this town that work very hard at keeping the Ely going and progressing without, you know, and we don't need to be labeled with taking money under the table type behavior. Believe me, none of us do.
Well, I'd just like to echo what Brad said, I absolutely.
Speaking of the mic, please.
You can hear me. I just would like to echo what Brad said, I 100% agree with him. I think there should be some accountability here and responsibility with some of the comments made that are, is backed by nothing. And so, um.
You need to tour the city, madam.
I think a little more respect would get you further. Here's your lunge.
I agree. Try respecting those that you serve.
That's a better way than I put it. All right, I guess we're all done with the public comment and the aftermath. Now we come to adjournment. I just need a motion to adjourn and, second, is, we get.
I, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, second, please.
I second that.
Okay, everyone, first and second, all those in favor of adjourn the meeting? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, adjourn.
My second. When anything under 70 is called to me, it's all the same.
Do you want to come with me?
Arizona.
Oh, yes, sir.
But I think I have good, you know.
Thank you. I need some.
Hey, okay, thank you very much.
I also moved on to, uh, Patrick Johnson by superstition, um.
Oh, yeah.
Moved on with the, uh.
This has been a Georgetown production. George Chatchis reporting. The preceding program was sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by KGTV Channel 10 in Ely, Nevada.